February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman, hold on, Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower? Any additions or deletions to the minutes? The roll, please.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
Do any of the Alderman have received communications to share? Okay. Chief, I think I'd like to ask you to come up now. There was an important communication that I feel that we need to share since we have such a large crowd here, and it's important information that we want to let people know about. So I asked Chief to, he's going to do a report later on in the meeting, but this one, I wanted him to make sure everyone knows about.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and residents. As many of you recall, last year, November and October, we had a rash of burglaries. And they were pretty egregious because they were occurring in the middle of the day and valuable items were being taken while people were away from home for very short periods of time. Well, in collaboration with some sister agencies, and I can't get into much of the detail now because the investigation is still ongoing, but we've been able to identify a nationwide burglary ring that operates in multi-states all across the United States. We've been able to identify three subjects up to this point. We've recovered some property and some money. Some of our Darien residents have viewed the property and identified some of it as potentially their property, at least tentatively. We have some additional show-ups to do on the property to determine if it is in fact the property of the residents. And the investigation is ongoing. We will likely be able to close three, four, or five of our cases based on this information.
Yeah, I thought there was important information that all of the Alderman and all of our viewing audience and the residents here to know. That's great news, very good news. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for sharing that. Let's move on to the mayor's report. The first item under the mayor's report is a motion to approve a resolution commending Charles Raymond Allen for his achievement to the rank of Eagle Scout in the city of Darien. And I have that motion that I'd like, that resolution to read to the record. You'll have to sit down for just a minute. I have to make you official. Whereas Charles Raymond Allen is the son of Kathy and Stuart Allen and the brother of Elizabeth, and whereas Charles attended Concord Elementary and Cass Junior High School, and whereas Charles is currently a senior at Hinsdale South High School, and whereas Charles has displayed leadership within the community as an active member of Troop Ninety-Seven, Darien, Illinois, Displanes Valley Council, Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Charles has earned twenty-six merit badges, and whereas Charles' Eagle Scout Service Project consisted of refurbishing the interior courtyard at Cass Junior High School, which involved obtaining a grant from Cass District Sixty-three Foundation for the purchase of tables and chairs, solicitation of donations of day lilies from the Darien Garden Club, planting the perennial flowers, sanding and staining the courtyard benches, and assembling the new tables and chairs, and whereas Charles achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on October twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, and will be formally recognized and receive his award at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor at Lord of Life Church on March fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and whereas Eagle Scout Charles Raymond Allen is an exemplary model for the Boy Scouts of America by observing their motto, "To be prepared," and by following their teachings, "To be trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent." Now therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Weaver and the City Council of the city of Darien that Charles Raymond Allen is hereby commended for his achievement as an Eagle Scout, his service to the community, in particular for his continued efforts and contributions of time, energy, and devotion to the Boy Scouts of America and the city of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. The roll, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
MacGyver.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye.
Clerk Wagona.
Aye.
Treasurer Corn.
Aye.
Attorney Murphy.
Aye.
Administrator Vanna.
Yes.
Twelve ayes. Unanimous.
A unanimous decision. Now, Charles, do you want to come up? Have you been watching our meetings? Do you know the routine there to go and shake everybody's hands? Congratulations. Charles, you want to come back here? You have to receive this. And would you like to say a few words? Up there.
The mic, right there.
The mic's on right there.
Thank you.
You know what? We better, is your mom, mom and dad here?
My mom's here.
Okay. You wanted to take a picture, right? Okay, let me come down there and, we'll take a picture in front of the dais. Okay, we'll pretend we're presenting this to you again. Charles, the letter to Charles. Charles, you'll have to come up one more time. I forgot to give you the letter that we, that will be able to be put in your book for your Eagle Scout ceremony. So I want to give you that. Okay. And also, I just wanted to, go ahead, you can, I wanted to recognize two other Eagle Scouts that are going to be in the Court of Honor Ceremony on March fifteenth with Charles. They are, they are not Darien residents, but I always recognize all Eagle Scouts. So would Andrew and Joseph Zalina come up and receive these, their letters? Okay. Congratulations.
I think you're a mush.
You're twins, huh?
Yeah, we are.
Everybody shake hands? Oh. Okay. Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Oh, create some problems there, Mr. Gondik.
I was just trying to make it amicable.
This is a great city council meeting when we get to honor so many young people. And moving right along, we have a rather large group to recognize this time. And I'd like to read the mayoral proclamation to honor the Hinsdale South Dance Line. Whereas TDI, which stands for Tradition Development Integrity, honors the rich tradition of category competition and competitive dance, and whereas TDI recognizes the unique artistic qualities and diverse technical demands of the separate and distinct styles of dance, and whereas each of these separate and distinct styles of dance warrant their own stage and are deserving of their own awards, and whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line is coached by head coach Courtney Gillette and assistant coach Heather Riggs, and whereas the team captains are Alexis Artovich, Hannah Nodas, and Kelly Sundee, did I pronounce that right? Sund or Sundee? I got it right, okay. And whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line members are Emily Albert, Alexis Artovich, Erica Caruso, Sarah Sepeda, Dakota Dapkis, Madison Gasada, Natalie Garino, Megan Ida, Skylar Envy, Kaylee McGinnis, Hannah Nodas, Megan O'Malley, Mia Peak, Natalie Rhoda, Rhody, Bridget Sullivan, Kelly Sundee, Gianna Ventieri, Nikki Webster, and Tessa Webster. And whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line competed at the TDI Two Thousand and Fifteen Category Championship at Northern Illinois University Convocation Center in DeKalb on February fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line won first place for the two-way kick category, and whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line won first place for the two-way palm category, and whereas the Hinsdale South Dance Line tied for the highest varsity dance score for the entire day, regardless of category or school size, and whereas this is the second consecutive year as TDI Kick Champions and the ninth state title for the team. And whereas in addition to the team's success at the TDI Category Championship, the team competed in the IHSA Dance State Series on January thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, and finished thirteenth in the two-way dance division. Now therefore, I Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the city of Darien, do proclaim March second, two thousand and fifteen, as Hinsdale South Dance Line Day. Now the team has to come up. Well, first of all, let's invite the coaches up. Coaches, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone for having us here today. We are blessed to have an amazing group of young ladies who are also well-supported by their city, their school, and a very spirited group of parents and families that follow them from competition to competition. Our girls are always very pleased to represent their school and their city, and we hope that they continue to do you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Now stay up here because we'll have the team come up, and we'll take a photograph of all of you up front. And you get to shake all of our hands, too. Okay. Come on. Why don't you all stand in front of the dais here? And I'm sure there's some cameras in the audience to take pictures of you. And do one of, why don't you have one of the girls hold that in front? Okay. I'll stick out here. I'm just going to be on.
I saw the tape. There's no way I could pay anything.
She did a dancer with the stars.
I'll stick out here. I'm just going to be on.
I just like to say that we've come a long way. This is a very long, intensive sport, and it goes ten months long. That's a very long time, on top of like, all the time that the coaches and captains put in. So we do start from just a simple football routines, and we have come a very long way from that, so I'm very proud of everything we've done. I'm glad that we have amazing girls representing our team, so.
Congratulations. Make us all proud, that's good. Congratulations. Whoever took the best picture, get that to us so we can put it up on the Wall of Fame, okay?
Mary Sullivan, yes, yes. She's good at that, so.
Thank you all for coming out. Wait to them. The next item under the mayor's report is our representatives from Cancer Smashers. Do we have the representative here? Okay. Welcome back.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jessica Plazak, and I'm here tonight to represent a group of Darien kids that are dedicated.
Hold on, just a minute. Yeah, let's close that door. And, yeah. We want, we want the viewing audience to hear you, too. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, again. My name is Jessica Plazak, and I'm here tonight to represent a group of Darien kids that are dedicated to finding a cure for all cancers. I'm proud to say that I'm a member of the Cancer Smashers. We are a hundred percent kids, all volunteers, trying to make a difference in the fight against cancer. As I stand here in front of you, I'm sure someone comes to mind who has been affected by this horrible disease. For me, I am a Cancer Smasher to honor my grandma, who is a breast cancer survivor. So I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight to let the entire town of Darien know that the Cancer Smashers are working hard to put on an event that'll be fun for everyone to raise money for cancer research. Like I said earlier, we are all volunteers, so every penny of the proceeds will go to the Cancer Smasher Postdoctoral Award. This aw, excuse me, this award was set up at Northwestern in our honor to help a doctor continue with their research. The great thing about this award is that the kids of Cancer Smashers get to actually choose the award from the pool of applicants. The winner, excuse me, so at this time, I would like to invite everyone in the town of Darien to attend the Cancer Smasher and EJH Student Council Family Fund Night on Saturday, March fourteenth, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Eisenhower Junior High. I encourage everyone to see how us Cancer Smashers work hard together to run a successful fundraiser, all in the name of ending cancer. I sincerely hope the Cancer Smashers can count on the city of Darien to help make our event a success. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
And exactly what is happening at the event on March fourteenth?
There'll be games, and food, and like, jumpy's, just like a fun fair.
A fun fair?
Yeah.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming up. Did anyone else want to speak? No?
I think they had a handout.
Okay. Oh, a handout, okay, great. Thank you very much. We, we'll plan to be there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I still have my shirt. I almost wore my shirt tonight.
Okay, you know what? We'll all have to wear our shirts to the event.
Yeah, we got shirts last year.
Yeah. Thank you very much for, did you get the name of the person that was? Yes, Jessica Plazak. Beth, I see you in the audience there, yes. Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, a motion to approve the appointment of John Breslin to our police pension board. John will be taking the place of Patrick Murphy, who, his term is up, and he's decided not to stay on the board. So John comes to us with a great resume. Many of you may remember that he was our city treasurer at one time, and he currently, were you all copied on his, his application? Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve John Breslin as on our police pension board? Ted Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Marques. The roll, please.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belke.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
John, would you come forward and be sworn in? Has it been that long? Fifteen years? Almost? Yeah. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the police pension board according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. A lefty. All right. Really? I'm not financial, and I'm a lefty. Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Congratulations, John.
Thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Thanks for stepping up, John. That's the last, last Wednesday in April.
So will you give a, no? Okay. What's going on?
Should at least be there.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming in. Let's move to the city clerk's report.
I do have one item. Meet and greet will take place with the mayor on Monday, March sixteenth, at 6:00 PM in the city hall conference room, which is located right upstairs. Thank you.
Okay. And the city administrator's report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Police Department. The department head of information, and the chief, chief will go over the thirteenth period.
Good evening again. We have a lot of positive information tonight.
Yeah.
I'll start off with, we fielded a complaint regarding parking on Anderman Lane, which is a private street operated by the Farmingdale Community Apartment Complex here. And we worked with management, Mike Barron's initially, and then Stephanie Walker ultimately. And we've come to an agreement, and so we should be getting some resolution to the problem. They've agreed to make the street a private street, make no parking on the private street, I should say. So we'll be tossing it off to Dan, and Dan will finish the project out. We did a lot of research to determine how many cars were parking there, how bad the parking problem was, and Stephanie was very amenable to forwarding the information to their legal department and coming up with a resolution. So we should be getting something back on that fairly soon.
Good.
Our city attorney is working on drafting up a memorandum of understanding or an agreement with Farmingdale now, so should be getting, getting that pretty, pretty soon now.
Yeah. Thank you.
We also talked about, we've already talked about the burglary issue. We also had a rash of burglaries to motor vehicles and thefts. In the burglaries to motor vehicles, keys were being left in vehicles, and individuals were entering the vehicles. Several cars locally were taken, and other cars from other jurisdictions were taken in other jurisdictions and left here in Darien. Some of those cars found their way to the southeast side of Chicago. And so again, in collaboration with our sister agencies, we've identified three subjects all from the southeast side of Chicago, and that should allow us to clear up probably a half dozen or so of our burglaries to the motor vehicle and vehicle thefts.
Good news.
Both of these cases underscore two things, a continued need for hypervigilance on the part of both the police department and the residents, and the fact that we need to be, be very concerned when something occurs that arouses our suspicion. And then not only be concerned about it, but do something about it, pick up the phone, dial nine-one-one, and give us an accurate description as possible. Residents will, we hope, will continue to report suspicious activity, continue requesting house watches, writing down license plates of suspicious vehicles and descriptions, registering your video surveillance system, installing alarms and making sure that they're turned on, and avoiding patterns that are detectable. We're also contemplating or considering a burglary seminar for mid-spring, where we'd have a panel discussion, and actually bring in former burglars to give tips and clues on how to avoid being burglarized. So if there's any input on that, I'd like to receive it, but that's something that we're considering. We think it'll be a valuable tool. An update on something, we had two domestic homicides in Darien in two thousand and fourteen. And one, local man Joseph Spatelli, who's thirty-six, murdered his ex-girlfriend's boyfriend and abducted her. He was recently convicted and given sixty-five years in the penitentiary. So we're happy to hear that. Have some citizen tips. Handicap parking restrictions are problematic. If you go to www.cybertriveillinois.com, which is the Secretary of State's website, and at the bottom, there's a link for persons with disabilities parking complaint. You can make a complaint either anonymously or with an email that talks, that will give you some relief when you, when you see the handicap parking violations. Last month, we issued a very exhaustive list of various scams. We have a couple of new scams that are taking place. Make money with Apple. What happens a resident will receive an email regarding a money-making opportunity. Don't buy into any of this. This is an additional scam. You can never get that money back, because usually, we had, we had one recently where an individual called and implied that he was the grandson of a victim, and the victim was asked to put X number of dollars on a green dot card, or several green dot cards, and the loss was fairly extensive. So it's not something you can get back. One of the other scams is a free Walmart gas card, where the resident is required to pay some money to get a free Walmart gas card. It's all fake and fictitious. Probably the best admonition we can make is that anyone who's calling you and soliciting your personal finances or trying to get you to pay some money in advance for something that they're offering, hang up, call nine-one-one, it's a fake. We've recently fielded a complaint from a resident about solicitations from the Metropolitan Alliance of Police. And between Sergeant Sharray and myself, what we learned is that the Metropolitan Alliance of Police that represents our Darien Police Department, collective bargaining unit, hires a third-party solicitor. And we've fielded resident complaints that the caller for the solicitation was representing themselves as a member of the Darien Police Department. So Greg worked on one end, and I actually fielded a call from a resident, and the resident told me that, gave me the number. So I called the individual back and advised him that if this continued, I would have two detectives appear at the home of the resident where he was wanting to pick up this money, and I would charge him with a felony false personation of a police officer, because that's what it amounts to. And it's unconscionable that all the residents would, year after year, would be reporting the same thing. So right now, we haven't fielded any new complaints. We're not sure if that's going to stop, but we're going to continue to work to make sure that that stops. As part of our community engagement plan, we're going to several, several new strategies or different strategies. First and foremost, we're looking to reduce the number of thefts at Hinsdale South. There's been a two-hundred-and-seventeen percent increase in thefts from unattended lockers since two thousand and twelve. That represents a shift from eighteen in two thousand and twelve to fifty-seven last year. Most often, what's taken is iPhones, iPads, and what have you. So we're working with school administrators on coming up with a strategy. Our crime analyst has done an exhaustive analysis of those thefts, and we know what time of day they occur, where they're occurring at. So we think that there's something we can do to reduce that. We're always looking to work with the park district to make sure that it's as safe as possible. We're also looking for ways to introduce our citizens, our residents, to the new technology that we're using in Darien, specifically the firearm simulator, so that they can get a feel of what we're doing and what's required of an officer to react, the reaction time, and what goes into the use of a firearm by an officer. I think some of the council members have actually used the simulator and found it very enlightening in terms of the reaction time and the realism associated with the simulator. Recently, the police committee suggested that we take another step towards community engagement, coffee with a cop. So we're investigating that. Ultimately, what happens is we pre-selected locations throughout town. The business will host, simply host the meeting place, and then we'll go in and meet with groups of citizens and discuss a wide array of topics. There is some training required for that, so we're looking into the training. The next one isn't until late spring. Alderman Mackiver actually introduced that a police committee, disinformation at a police committee recently. As one year closes, what we always do in police, the police land, as all the department heads do, is we look at the, to measure our own efficiency. And we do it numerically, we do it in three ways, actually. Numerically, based on crime statistics, we compare increases and reductions, determination of whether we have implemented those practices that can be identified as best practices industry-wide. And equally important, if not more important, is the perception of the residents. A community is only as safe as the residents feel, so the statistics don't necessarily mean a whole lot if the residents don't feel safe. And so we hope we are engaging in those practices that make the residents feel safe. In terms of the statistical analysis, what we did is we looked at two, three-year periods. We looked at two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven, which is a three-year period prior to me taking, assuming command of the Darien Police Department, and two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen, which is the first three-year period that I've been here. And so what we're looking at is armed robbery reduction of eighty-three percent. That's five. You can never get that money back, because usually, we had one recently where an individual called and implied that he was the grandson of a victim. And the victim was asked to put X number of dollars on a green dot card, or several green dot cards. And the loss was fairly extensive. So, it's not something you can get back. One of the other scams is a free Walmart gas card, where the resident is required to pay some money to get a free Walmart gas card. It's all fake and fictitious. Probably the best admonition we can make is that anyone who's calling you and soliciting your personal finances or trying to get you to pay some money in advance for something that they're offering, hang up, call 911, it's a fake. We've recently fielded a complaint from a resident about solicitations from the Metropolitan Alliance of Police. And between Sergeant Shurey and myself, what we learned is that the Metropolitan Alliance of Police that represents our Darien Police Department, collective bargaining unit, hires a third-party solicitor. And we've fielded resident complaints that the caller for the solicitation was representing themselves as a member of the Darien Police Department. So Greg worked on one end, and I actually fielded a call from a resident. And the resident told me that, gave me the number. So I called the individual back and advised him that if this continued, I would have two detectives appear at the home of the resident where he was wanting to pick up this money. And I would charge him with felony false personation of a police officer, because that's what it amounts to. And it's unconscionable that all the residents would, year after year, would be reporting the same thing. So, right now, we haven't fielded any new complaints. We're not sure if that's going to stop, but we're going to continue to work to make sure that that stops. As part of our community engagement plan, we're going to several new strategies or different strategies. First and foremost, we're looking to reduce the number of thefts at Hensdale South. There's been a 217% increase in thefts from unattended lockers since 2012. That represents a shift from 18 in 2012 to 57 last year. Most often, what's taken is iPhones, iPads, and what have you. So we're working with school administrators on coming up with a strategy. Our crime analyst has done an exhaustive analysis of those thefts. And we know what time of day they occur, where they're occurring at. So we think that there's something we can do to reduce that. We're always looking to work with the Park District to make sure that it's as safe as possible. We're also looking for ways to introduce our citizens, our residents, to the new technology that we're using in Darien, specifically the firearm simulator, so that they can get a feel of what we're doing and what's required of an officer to react, the reaction time, and what goes into the use of a firearm by an officer. I think some of the council members have actually used the simulator and found it very enlightening in terms of the reaction time and the realism associated with the simulator. Recently, the police committee suggested that we take another step towards community engagement, coffee with a cop. So we're investigating that. Ultimately, what happens is we pre-selected locations throughout town. The business will host, simply host the meeting place. And then we'll go in and meet with groups of citizens and discuss a wide array of topics. There is some training required for that, so we're looking into the training. The next one isn't until late spring. Alderman Mackay were actually introduced at a police committee, disinformation at a police committee recently. As one year closes, what we always do in police, the police land, as all the department heads do, is we look at the, to measure our own efficiency. And we do it numerically, we do it in three ways, actually. Numerically, based on crime statistics, we compare increases and reductions, determination of whether we have implemented those practices that can be identified as best practices industry-wide. And equally important, if not more important, is the perception of the residents. A community is only as safe as the residents feel. So the statistics don't necessarily mean a whole lot if the residents don't feel safe. And so, we hope we are engaging in those practices that make the residents feel safe. In terms of the statistical analysis, what we did is we looked at two, three-year periods. We looked at 2009 to 2011, which is a three-year period prior to me taking, assuming command of the Darien Police Department, and 2012 to 2014, which is the first three-year period that I've been here. And so what we're looking at is armed robbery reduction of 83%. That's five fewer incidents during this time period. Burglary to motor vehicle incidents were reduced by 40%, which is a difference of 100, 100 fewer incidents. Residential burglaries reduced by 20%, motor vehicle theft by 46%. The increases in the areas that we looked at, the most notable was domestic battery, up by 35% or 40 more incidents over the three-year period, and retail theft up 71%. We're still trying to wrap our heads around the increase in domestic violence, what we can do about it, and what's cause of, what the cause of it is. In terms of the retail theft, this is caused largely by the expansion of the Walmart store and new security team that they've hired that's more efficient at catching bad guys. The other metric of, what this shows is that we've made progress, not success. We have a ways to go, and there are things that we still need to do and want to do, but we're headed in the right direction. One of the other metrics for success is, as a law enforcement agency, what are we doing? How are we doing in protecting the assets of the department? And the city, it's taxpayer dollars. And so, we look at how we do in terms of managing our resources. This discussion is often framed by national law enforcement think tanks such as IACP, PERF. The president has weighed in on this, Eric Holder, the Attorney General, has weighed in on it. And what we want to do is, I'm sorry, in addition to that, Hillard Heinz, one of the leading consultants in law enforcement and business, has also weighed in on it. And so what I have in my report is four points that they've listed that are critical in policing in the coming years. And I wanted to show and highlight how the Darien Police Department is ahead of the curve. It's important to be ahead of the curve, because if we're not ahead of the curve, then we're reacting or always operating in management out of crisis. And we don't want to be operating out of crisis, because it forces you to make bad decisions and relationships are already eroded at that point. So, the first priority that Hillard Heinz lists, and also is listed in the PERF and IACP, our community-oriented policing is now a strategic priority for every single state and local law enforcement agency. And what they cite under that heading is creation of greater openness and transparency for communities served, organizational transparency from a protective or closed culture to one driven by accountability, integration of opportunities for community outreach and partnerships into police operations, identification and implementation of problem-solving strategies, and commissioning of organization evaluations that inform police leaders of critical issues. So, we take a look at what we've done in that regard in the Darien Police Department. One effort is our Crime Free Housing Initiative, is an example of a police-citizen partnership. We're in partnership before there's a problem. We identified a certain number of calls when we first introduced the Crime Free Housing ordinance. But now, what we're doing is creating a partnership so that everybody becomes a stakeholder ship in resolving this. Use of data analysis and problem solving, spending time at local schools and providing presentations, greater transparency by publishing data. I think that the council, over the last three years, and the public in general, is privy to more data related to police operations than at any time in the past. And that level of transparency can only bode well for, not only the operation of the police department, but for our relationships with both the elected officials and the rest of the consuming public. Monthly newsletter from the chief, crime mapping available to the public, published crime alerts. When the burglary pattern happened, we didn't necessarily wait. We actually made it a heater case ourselves by reaching out to news media and other mass media outlets to create information and pressure. And so what it ultimately did is illuminated the problem much greater, at a much faster speed than normally would have been. Town hall meetings to discuss hot topics, presentations to seniors and other groups. And we gradually have begun moving the police department from one of protective to one of accountability. Our sergeants are understanding, coming to understand the accountability model, that they have the right to make choices, not only the right, but the responsibility and the professional obligation to make choices about how police officers are deployed, how resources are allocated, controlling overtime, managing overtime. When you look at Darien Fest, it was, three years, four years ago, it was $20,000 to put on Darien Fest. Now it's down to 10 or 12. And so, those are the kind of managerial responses that we're looking for, and the accountability that we're looking for. Trend number two that Hillard Heinz cites is federal oversight for police accountability. That's huge, because each time the federal government gets involved in a local agency, there's a price tag that goes with it. And that price tag can range from $3 million to $55 million in New Orleans, where the federal government found that not only was the police department flawed, but the county jail system was flawed. And so, in New Orleans, that oversight cost them $55 million in unfunded mandates. So, some of the issues they cite under there, early intervention systems that identify officers with a pattern of problematic behavior, improved expanded training for police, transparency and accountability and enforcement, that's huge. Policies and procedures that are comprehensive and up to date, de-escalation of officer-citizen encounters, and most importantly, a grander emphasis on the sanctity of life. Again, let's talk about what we're doing. We've amended our complaint disciplinary process, so every complaint is processed now. Even if it's not investigated, a note is made of it. We purchased a subscription to Guardian Tracking. Guardian Tracking allows us to track the behavior of all of our officers, not so much in a disciplinary, but as a system, but as an early warning system, so that we're alerted to when officers having a problem, whether it's traffic accidents, tardiness, sick use, whatever it is. We're aware of it. We established a per diem policy for the expenditure of reimbursements, changed the policy on accepting gratuities. We're in a complete policy review mode right now. We amended the policy on tracking the use of force. A lot of the officers don't necessarily see the need to track the use of force. But one of the reasons why Ferguson got into deep trouble was they didn't have a mechanism in place to track how many times an officer used force. Developing a use-of-force model, our acquisition of the TI simulator identifies how we're supposed to use force, and then what happens in the post-incident of an officer-involved shooting. All of those are critical feature components to making sure that we're prepared, both intellectually, emotionally, and financially. I met with the local newly-elected president of the local NAACP. We changed our weapons policy, we changed our suspension policy. And those are the, there have been a lot of changes in the three years that I've been here. But those changes are all necessary for us to meet the demands that we're facing now. And as these issues become more articulated, it's far better for us to be out front on them than to be behind the eight ball. Issues on the use of body cameras, body cameras are huge. Everybody has a camera now, and more often than not, the perspective of a police encounter is told unilaterally from the person who's holding the camera. And the police officer's perspective is not taken into consideration. So there are some impediments to us having body cameras, but we've looked at it, we've selected a vendor for the body cams. Now we're waiting on some legislation that governs, because Illinois has some very specific consensual and non-consensual over here laws. We're looking to make sure that we're able to apply it in the most prudent terms, so that we can do both audio and video taping with the body cam. So, and we started this, once again, we didn't start this as a result, we started this, our communications began in the middle of last year before the FURA really started about mandating of body cams. And finally, social media. Social media, it's amazing how much information that criminals are willing to put on social media. And it's also equally amazing as to how much mining that we're able to do, legally able to do. And so, we're looking at several components that will allow us to more efficiently mine social media. We've acquired several subscription technologies. Number one is leads online, that allows us to look for pawned items and frequent pawns, people who steal things and then pawn them at local pawn shops and whatnot. There's an obligation at the pawn shops, report, we're able to look on leads online and locate these. I think we've had one hit thus far since we've had it, and that's something that will only grow. So, that will conclude my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes, sir.
Chief, you had mentioned about domestic violence earlier on in your report.
Yes, sir.
And you, I don't want to say an epidemic, and I'm looking at the statistics you have. On your three breakdowns, you have offense and incident report statistics, shows that domestic violence is up 15, 15.4% year-to-date. 16.7% in the change, but a decrease in the quarter. But then you go down to your key statistics, it shows a 15.2% decrease. And then the rest are down to like 11.4%. What's the correlation between the three sets of numbers? Two are showing me a negative, but then there's one showing me a positive.
Well, the number of incidents that are reported where we have to make a police report, the number of arrests are down, and that's the disparity. We have to keep in mind that the number of incidents will always be higher than the number of arrests. Oftentimes, a person isn't on the, the offender's not on the scene. And so, we don't make an arrest. Or if there's no physical violence, where the officers can see that someone's been battered, then we can't necessarily make an arrest, even though the report is made and there are two, both parties are present. If we can't determine who the predominant aggressor was because of a lack of markings or a lack of other evidence, we're kind of left with nothing. And then the other thing to keep in mind, even though there's an increase, a lot of the domestics involve parents and children. And sometimes it's young, children as young as 15, 16, who have argued with, fought with the parent or that kind of thing. And so, that's part of the increase there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
For the statistics for arrests for year-to-date for 2014 and 2013-12, when I'm looking at retail theft, it looks like it's up 240%. Now, I know when we get the reports, all of us aldermen here, there's a lot of Walmarts constantly. So, what kind of measures are you putting in place and working with Walmart to try to alleviate some of that?
Glad you asked that question. Walmart has a very interesting perspective. They have a year, an annual theft limit of $1.2 million, if I recall. We actually sat down and met with them. And if their theft, if their loss prevention does not exceed that, they're really not interested in taking any intercessory steps on preventing it. We actually hosted, probably just before the holiday season started last year, retail theft seminar involving the local retail establishments. We worked with Claire on putting that together. And we did get a huge response, and so we're going to go back at it again, maybe with more time to build on it. But we, the issue is, is as long as their loss is within their acceptable limits, which is $1.2 million a year, they're fine with it.
So in other words, if it goes over that, then they make an arrest?
Well, no, they make arrests. We're making arrests, that's one of the reasons why the numbers are so high. But they don't take any intercessory steps beyond what they're doing now, they hire security. And what we've been looking at is ways to mitigate the thefts in the first place.
I think Alderman Belkey mentioned the numbers are going up, chief, for the arrests. And that's, you mentioned earlier, I think Walmart has been more aggressive now.
They're more aggressive.
At watching the customers and things, so that will certainly lead to more.
Well, they brought on a team, an additional team, loss prevention team, security officers, who are accustomed to ferreting out retail theft offenders. And so, that's one of the reasons why it's going up.
Any other questions for chief? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Let's.
The report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Let's move on to the treasures report, do you want to go over the warrant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting a council's approval of warrant number 141520 in the amount of $591,143.11 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended February 19th in the amount of $244,996.09 for a total to be approved of $836,139.20.
A motion to approve, Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belzick. Discussion. The roll, please.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belzick.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The warrant has been approved, let's move on to standing committee reports, and there are no, yes, we are, okay, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the November 24th, 2014 meeting, and those were submitted to the clerk's office. And I know it's a ways off, but our next meeting will be Monday, March 23rd at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Okay. Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our administrative finance meeting was canceled tonight due to lack of agenda items. Our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, April 6th at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room. And our next budget meeting will be tomorrow night at 6:30 PM in the council chambers.
Police committee?
Police committee, March 16th, 6:00 PM, in the police training room across the street, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen have questions? I think we, most of us discussed everything we had questions on during our work session. I'd like to open it up to the, anyone in the audience, if anyone wanted to address the city council on any of the items that are on our consent agenda this evening, or on our agenda at all. Okay, let's move on to old business, and there being no old business. Okay. I'd like to go over the consent agenda. There is, I forgot, I just discovered something I forgot to mention, but I'll do that under, I'll do that later under questions, comments. On the consent agenda, we have a large number of items, so I will start to read them for the viewing audience. The first item is a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for Class J temporary liquor license for Our Lady of Peace Catholic School. Item B is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of our personal property owned by the city of Darien, which is 75 traffic vests, Samsonite plastic briefcase and plastic CD disc racks, two of them. Item C is a motion to approve the purchase of a recording system for digital phones using Department of Justice award money. Item D is a motion to approve the purchase of 17 active shooter response kits using Department of Justice award money. Item E is a motion to approve a resolution approving and publishing the updated city of Darien official zoning map. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance granting a one-year extension to the previously approved minor amendment to a planned unit development at Darien Town Center, which is the Amvets Collection Center at Walmart. Item G has been moved to new business, so I'll move to the next item. Item, the new item G becomes motion to approve a resolution authorizing participation in the 2015 ComEd Green Region Program for the South Grove Park Detention Facility Program. And now, the rest of the items on the agenda are all proposals for work to be done over the whole year of May 1st, 2015, through April 30th, 2016, for work done within our Public Works Department. The first item is to approve underground pipe and valve, to approve a proposal from, from, wait a minute. Oh, that's it, okay. Underground pipe and valve ink for the Cloud Eddie fire hydrant repair parts. Next item is a motion, a resolution accepting a proposal from underground pipe and valve for the Cloud Medallion fire hydrant repair parts. The next item is a proposal from underground pipe and valve for the Cloud Eddie F-2500 fire hydrant repair parts. The next item is a proposal from Zible Water Service Products for the Traverse City fire hydrant repair parts. Boy, we're going to do a lot of fire hydrant repair parts, things this year. The next motion is a resolution to accept a proposal from Zible Water Service Products for Waterus Pacer fire hydrant repair parts. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for the Mueller Super Centurion fire hydrant repair parts. The next motion is a resolution accepting a proposal from Zible Water Service Products for US Pipe Fire Hydrant Repair Parts. The next motion is, the next motion is to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for Smith &amp; Blair stainless steel water main repair clamps, style 226, with stainless steel bolts for the maintenance of our water system. The next motion is a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for Smith &amp; Blair stainless steel water main repair clamp, style 238, for various sizes for maintenance of our water. sizes for maintenance of our water system. The next item is a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for Type K Copper Pipe for the maintenance of our water system. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for Mueller brand brass fittings for the maintenance of our water system. The next item is a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for General Water Department Utility Tools and Marking Supplies for the maintenance of our water system. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from HD Supply Waterworks for their General Water Department Utility Fixtures for the maintenance of our water system. And the last item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from East Jordan Iron Works for East Jordan Fire Hydrant Valves and Accessories, for the, for the same period that I mentioned earlier. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. The roll, please.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
All of the items have been approved. The, we have one item under new business, which was our old item G. It's a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the sign code for seventy-five, seventy-five-eleven Lamont Road Chestnut Court Shopping Center for Old Fashioned Suites. And I believe Alderman Belkey wanted to recuse herself from, from this, this item. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman, Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any discussion? Then the roll, please.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Abstain.
Kenny.
Aye.
I have five ayes, one abstention, and one absent.
The motion has been approved. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. I failed to mention communication that I received, and I did want to get it on the record tonight. Received an email from Deborah Allen, a resident on Ironwood, who wanted to express her appreciation for the Sierra Ironwood Drainage Project that was, was addressed and successfully resolved by the city. And she speaks not only for herself, but on behalf of all the neighbors who were affected by that drainage project. And also, she was, wanted to share her appreciation for the weather conditions this season, creating a daunting challenge for our city's municipal department with the streets being cleared and salted, not to mention the extra mile the city went to plow the corners of the bus stop corners for the city, for the children of the City of Darien, because, mainly because sidewalks had not been cleared, and the children were, were standing out on the streets. So, she was very grateful for that happening. So, I wanted to present that for the record. Any other questions, comments, and announcements? Alderman, Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Darien Lions Club last year initiated a new award, a new recognition that was titled the Humanitarian Award. And it was not an award just given to a Darien resident or a Darien Lions Club resident, but it was extended to nominations from Westmont, Woodridge, Downers Grove, Burr Ridge, Willowbrook, et cetera. Churches, schools, civic organizations were all asked to submit nominations. This year, that process has started again. Those nomination forms have gone out to all those organizations, every municipality. Westmont, Woodridge, Willowbrook have all received those, as well as all the churches within that geographic area have received the nomination and data sheet. I'm mentioning this tonight because we're going to have, there's going to be a link on our Darien Lions Club website for those who are interested in nominating someone. We'll say humanitarian award. If they click on that link, they'll be able to get the nomination form and the data sheet. And we will also have it on our Channel Six here, and on, I think, our Darien Direct Connect.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Yes, Tom, Alderman Belzak?
On March twenty-second, the Darien Lions Club will be having their annual Pancake Breakfast at Eisenhower Junior High from seven-thirty to one P.M. For more information, you can go to the Lions Club website, which is www.darienlions.org.
It's March twenty-second, right?
Correct.
Now, does the, does the Boy Scouts have it before or after yours?
They have it the eighth, they have it this Sunday.
You know, we haven't had any announcements of that at all.
It's been in the, it was in the church bulletin for Our Lady of Peace this last weekend.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because usually make, we make a bigger deal about, you know, that, and thanks, thanks, Alderman Belzak for that announcement on the Lions Club. Also, I happened to run into, I don't remember the name of the young man, the VFW, the winner of the VFW's scholarship for the, what was, it was the Voice of Amer, what was the occasion? At any rate, he went down to state. He won the scholarship here from, from the Darien VFW, and I happened to run into him and his parents at the, at the car wash. And he ended up winning ninth in state, so I thought that was really nice to at least let everybody know that he made it that far. So, congratulations to him. Any other announcements? Anyone in the audience want to address the city council? Did you, come on, come on up. You can say a few words. You weren't planning on doing that. You must tell us who you are, so you can tell us why you've been sitting there so patiently through this whole meeting. Do you want to use the microphone?
Hi, I'm Dean Diggers with Troop One-O-One. I'm working on my Eagle project, like, going through Eagle, so I have to get my two merit badges done with communication and citizenship in the community. So, I have to go through this meeting and read through, like, all of the dilemmas and what goes on here.
We have no dilemmas, I'm, you know, have you noticed that we have no?
Yes, I have noticed, yeah, that's correct.
Come tomorrow night, there'll be dilemmas tomorrow night. Come tomorrow night, come tomorrow night.
But, yeah, so, I had to go and just look through and see all that's going on with Darien.
Okay.
All the news. And then, yes, that is correct, that the Troop One-O-One Pancake Breakfast at Eisenhower is this upcoming Sunday.
This coming Sunday, wow, okay, okay. So, thank you, thank you for joining us. Now, do we go, do you go to other municipalities to see their city council meetings, or?
Oh, no, this is just the one I have to go to.
Okay.
Will you be coming to other meetings, or will you?
I could, but.
They're a lot of fun, aren't they?
It is.
Well, this was a fun night, yeah, with, with so many students here.
It was.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew a couple of the other Eagles.
Eagle scouts?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
They go to the same high schools I do.
Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gonna make it?
I'm trying.
Okay. If there's no other questions, comments, and announcements from the, from the audience or the city council, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I, you know what? I, I would like to kill John Potarowski for suggesting that I read the consent agenda.